Appeals, we have request for a notice on November fifth, six p.m. to eleven p.m. on Springfield Avenue. October twenty second, three p.m. to seven p.m. from the first time out. September eighteen, five thirty p.m. to seven, on T. A. Avenue. September fourth to fifth, one p.m. to ten p.m. on the third way drive. September tenth, one p.m. to seven p.m. on Langley Park. September third, one p.m. to seven p.m. on, on Day five. Public carers today, so public carers consider it a real necessity to drop off, drop off plans now. Public carers to prayer, structure it. Two fifteen and a half, Norman Street, of the business in order demolished and eleven eleven Springfield Avenue. Already demolished, precisely secured.
I don't have a problem with either one. Norman Street, that's, uh, that's right there at Lola, right? In the campground, that's that little video, half a house in between, uh, Ms. Baggett's, not this, but Ms. Budget's house and, uh, what you can call it, is it falling down?
It is, it's collapsed and the walls are starting to-
I haven't been over there in a while, let's write it from Ebon Kennedy's house, she used to own all those houses on that street. We need to, we gotta do something to start protecting those properties as quickly as possible, we're gonna lose a whole lot of history. But that street hasn't been taken care of in a while.
One twenty two Mohawk Street.
What about the house next to, uh, next to Council House property, I guess that's one eleven, that's the one where all the homeless people will live, right? The two-story white house at Halit-
Eleven eleven Springfield Avenue.
Yeah, in between Halit and-
Yes, I have additional information, um, legal department, uh, last week forwarded over a bankruptcy notice. So we need to table this until the bankruptcy hearing is, is-
That's what I was about to say, but, never mind.
Yeah, that's the house here, yes, that's correct.
Right, that's next door to Council House.
Yes, and, and our intention was to secure the main house with moving forward, cleaning up the property and then also-
Tear off the back of it.
The demolition of some of the accessory structures.
Okay, it's all that's left, okay.
Yes.
Was the, was the, uh, future in terms of the alder?
At this point, I do not know, we, we had not, uh, any contact other than, um, bankruptcy notice. Um, he's been indicated to our field inspectors that he wanted to renovate, but he has not.
They were apartment on that house for months. Okay. Okay, gotcha.
Yes, and definitely until the bankruptcy hearing is, is resolved, yes. And, Mr. President, I do have one other update for four twenty-three Mohawk Street. Um, the owner is in the process of applying permits and I'd like to, uh, hold that over for sixty days to give her a chance to get the permits to begin renovations. She's expressed that her intent is to move into the house and occupy it long-term, but it does need some renovations, it's got some exterior wallings, roof issues, some foundation issues, but she feels confident, she has the con- she's going through permitting right now to get her permits to begin repairs, but I'd like to give her sixty more days to get her permit and then begin the repairs.
This is on the email we are copying on. Is this when you, you used to email someone?
No, I believe two fifty-one Jackson is the one that-
There was one on the-
Uh, yes, and then you did it, yes.
We're holding forty-seven twenty-seven over, or I'm tabling it?
We'll come back.
Later, sorry.
Which one is that?
Fourteen three.
Mohawk Street, four twenty-one.
It's forty-seven twenty-seven.
Sixty days?
Yes.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, for our own hunt, um, the very latest, Larry Foster, um, requesting a call for acting to retire fire cutters. Angela Shaver Farmerson, uh, saying about a ditch near our park. Orders to sell over, sixty-four zero forty-two, um, just rebuilding the property at forty-one nineteen, forty-one sixty-one, forty-one seventy-three, forty-one seventy-five, home for both R one B three and I want to add one. Uh, standing for the wish to sell over, twenty-one seven zero eight, authorized contract with H. of Lee Burnson, construction for twenty twenty-two C I P city wire resurfacing. Twenty-one seven eighteen, authorized contract to fit list in commercial movers for James Seals, um, Park Community Center roof. Orders to sell over, zero one seven zero nine, authorized to, uh, City of Mobile, Mobile County, um, Mobile Satchel LLC and L. C.
Mr. President? Do we have any representatives from Realting here today?
Uh, yes, council member, uh, John Whitson is here on behalf of, uh, Realtor Hunt.
Good morning.
Morning.
Had a couple of questions brought up to me this week that I was going to answer that maybe you can help with. Um, first, it was presented last week that there's an estimated seven hundred fifty K in tax revenue that'll come into the city. Um, with the county providing one point two five million and the city providing one point two five million, is that seven fifty K split in half? And the county get half of that and the city get half of that, do you know?
I think that's actually a question better served by David Rogers possibly for that one, because those calculations were-
And there's one for you, so-
Uh, I'm hanging out, don't worry.
David, I can, I can speak for you on that.
Yeah.
The, the revenue is based on, uh, sales tax collections, because the sales tax driven project, so it would be the percentage of sales tax collected that the city normally receives on any sale, which is higher than the portion, I guess, of the county.
So, but the seven hundred fifty thousand estimate that was presented to us last week, is that for the city alone or is that city and county?
David, you have that, that's that point of sale, right?
It's city and county.
It's city and county.
City and county.
Yes.
Okay, so instead of two years, it would take about three and a half to, or so to, to get that payback, okay?
Well, but that, but that was just based on sales tax, we need to add into property tax plus what this wages will go back into the economy side of things, um, it's actually less on the city than it is on the county on payback periods.
Another question was, was asked to me, um, are there any, um, territory protections for the vicinity, for instance, um, Pensacola, Biloxi, are there any plans in the next five years to put, uh, Topgolf there? Because that's obviously, we would get a draw from those communities, um, is there any protections that we have in place? Um, so that that wouldn't go in the next three or four years?
So, um, I, I can't speak, there are no protections put in place in our lease, um, and I can't speak to what their growth plans are, however, I would tell you that they've taken X number of years to get down here, uh, I don't think that that's a near-term concern.
Could you call in and just before ten thirty, get that back to me?
Sure. Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. President.
Mr. Burger.
I had reached out to David Rogers after some of my constituents had asked me a couple of questions concerning some media reports that they had seen about some previous lawsuits that have been settled. Um, and so I asked a couple of questions, uh, about going forward, um, you know, where we are and what had happened, that sort of thing. The lawsuits were basically, and you can read them for yourself, uh, just over some wage issues, but they have been settled and in the interim, the last couple of years, I believe it is, Callaway Golf has come in and taken over. So it is my understanding that there have been no issues similar to those of the past since Callaway Golf has, has come in. And, um, that was one of the questions that I had, you know, what these folks here who are here today are able to speak to or going forward, and so that was my question to Mr. Whitson, you know, going forward. Um, what does Callaway Golf have in mind, where are we going, you know, what kind of business practices do, do they have, I'm sure each is a franchise? And they have a handbook for policies and procedures of how everything is handled and that they all sign off on, you know, just, this would be too, I think, alleviating concerns that people in the, in the community might have based on some of the things that they're reading.
Sure, so, um, I, I can't, I can't speak to, uh, Realtor League, uh, principal, non-employee of Topgolf, uh, or Callaway, but I can speak to the fact that, one, they're all, uh, corporately owned properties and so they are all fall under the corporate umbrella and Callaway is a world-class organization, um, publicly traded, over billion-dollar valuation, and they have, you know, top-tier, you know, resource and top-tier best practices. So I think that, 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 and they, yes, ma'am, as far as handbooks and practices in place, those are all firmly in place and across the, across the company.
And we've had nothing in the last couple of years that I, I have found anyway.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, one other question that did come up as well, um, in the Galloway Park, there is a special taxing district. Well, I didn't think it, um, where Hollywood theaters were, I didn't think that that was a part of it, am I correct?
It is part of the pub.
It is part of the pub as far as the, the special district where the Galloway Park is.
I don't believe it is.
Yeah, I, I didn't think so, but I just wanted to find out.
I just wanted to make sure I was answering which, which part of the question you were asking, so, yes, ma'am.
Well, that's what I thought, but somebody had asked and I wanted to make sure I was on the right track.
That's what I understand. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate the city support.
Uh, I've got one for the administration, um, based on what I just heard, could somebody clarify to me, uh, where the, how the sales tax is dispersed, uh, from the point of sale? How do we receive that? How do we receive, i- if Walmart was on the corner of I sixty-five and Highway ninety, sales tax in the City of Mobile is ten percent, what portion of that sales tax goes to the City of Mobile?
Five percent.
Sorry, five percent, so the rest is state, how-
So you have, you have four, this is state and one that's accounting.
So only five percent of it total, five cents that goes, five cents directly to the city, four percent to the state, one percent to the county.
Yes.
Zero eighty-seven one zero, approved by the city for bunker theaters, we plan to clean, or local fire rescue department, four eighty-seven eleven, we're working on a sensitive corporation, for new forms for technical engineering and medical department. Zero eighty-seven twelve, approved for going to TSA for desktop computers, M R P. Zero eighty-seven thirteen, approved for going to city of the government for wireless management, X six point four, police department. Zero eighty-seven fourteen, approved for going to Toto, L. C. for garbage cart, bins, handles and screws. Zero eighty-seven fifteen, approved for going to Olive Equipment for boom truck. Um, thirteen seven sixteen, authorized channel for monomaster, the development group for English instructor, twenty-seven seventy-five, Springfield Avenue. Twenty-one seven, one seven, authorized contract, Kimling, Ford and Associates for engineering support related to great proposal development.
Mr. President. I love this initiative and, and, and I think it, it's after giving the, the city the flexibility that it needs to, to do these types of things. With that said, I want to see the same thing on the agenda at the same time for public services and forestry. I'd like to see a three hundred thousand, excuse me, a three hundred thousand dollar allocation for public services for right-of-way bowling, ditch clearing, its backlog. I'd like to see a three hundred thousand allocation for forestry for trees and, and stumps, for instance, um, I've gotten two emails in the last two days, Mr. Shore, can't get a tree stump cut down, it's been two years since the city cut the tree down, still can't get the stump removed. Ms. Clark, drainage ditch behind the house has not been done in five years with all the rain, it's now flooded and it took my fence down, my dog can't go outside. Um, just last night, I got an email message, the ditch in Pinehurst is overgrown, we have rats. Um, we just don't have the bandwidth to get after all these, and, and I think that's same with the, the money we're underspent in public works, um, just this year. We've got to get after this backlog and, and we're doing it with engineering services, with being able to allocate that money and then they can tap into that money as needed. I think we can do the exact same thing with public services and forestry with these types of issues and get those backlogs taken care of in very short order by subcontracting, um, these, these landscape folks and, and stump running companies, uh, can we do that?
We, you'll see in this year's budget, I think it's nine hundred thousand set aside for right-of-way bowling, there's a one point two million for canopy.
Yes.
So, those are, those are, we, we're doing exactly what you just-
But that's next year, we've got problems now and if we can, we've got funds now, we're underspending in public services, public works, why can't we do the three hundred thousand for them now, just like this?
We have moved some of the money from some of the, I guess, the attrition savings over into right-of-way bowling, so we are, we are moving it, we're just-
Are we subcontracting these, these companies?
We are.
To do that?
We are.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Burger.
And, and I certainly agree with what Scott was saying, but to take it a little further on the, on the bowling, we need to make sure that there are slope mowers in there so that they can get into the ditches and not just on the sides. And the other thing that I've mentioned to the chief of staff about and some of the council members, the issue of potholes and continually filling potholes that continually need to be refilled and refilled and where they are, a lot of times there are big sections of potholes. How do we handle these things for utilities when utilities come in and make a cut? If it's a sizable area, we make them come back and mill it and then repave it with a big swamp of asphalt. We've talked about doing that in public works so that if we've got streets that we're not able to get to resurfacing for the next two, three years, they've got all these potholes, that would save us a lot of time where and there I'm going in, you know, every other week or so and filling potholes, because as you know, it rains and those potholes, you know, the, the asphalt comes up, so we're just, it's a vicious circle. So if we can include that in some of this money that we are setting aside for public services, I think that would be a really good program for the city and save a lot of us headaches from having to call over and over to get these potholes filled.
Mr. President. I'd ask that we hold this one over, I requested a list of, of grants that this will go to, I haven't seen that at this point, it's been sent in the past few minutes, then-
I've done one.
It's been, I, I, that doesn't provide me enough opportunity to review it.
Okay.
But I do have a concern, I mean, or our question, I guess, would be, are we doing, um, engineering in this way because we don't currently have the capacity in our engineering department to get this sort of work done?
Yes, and also some of these grants, um, we're running up, getting them done, we just get them ready for application.
Okay, and, um, are, I guess I'll look at the list, but I, we, we, I'm just looking at eleven, just over eleven million dollars of projects that we recently allocated money from the general surplus that seems to be drawing on the capacity of the engineering department as well. Is, is any of this going to help mitigate some of these other projects, for example, public safety training complex, animal shelter, fishing pier, Cypress Shores drainage improvements, Langley Park Boat House? Give me your question again. Is, are any of these funds of this three hundred thousand dollars that increases our capacity in the engineering department going towards these projects that I outlined?
Yeah, the lab's not here, but I believe we've already left a contract out for the, um, animal shelter, you know, and so, no, but the answer is that, that three hundred thousand is set aside for grant application.
Yeah, right, so, but, but we don't, of this eleven million, three hundred fifty thousand dollars, we don't have the money set us currently to fund all of these projects. You know, we don't have the money set aside, these are in the design phases, say the Langley Park Boat House, that money hasn't been set aside for the actual project. Same thing with the Cypress Shores drainage improvements, we haven't allocated the money for it, this is in design phase, fishing pier, public safety training complex, we don't have those funded, those projects funded, so it would behoove us to attempt to get a grant of some sort for these, right? So then this three hundred thousand dollars that we're setting aside for grant applications, I guess my question is, will any of this three hundred thousand dollars go towards trying to obtain grants that will fund these projects that we've already committed money to?
I mean, we'll certainly be looking for, the design is going to get us to the point to where we could actually complete an application, so if the money's already been, been left for the design of those various projects, that would be outside of the three hundred thousand dollars that you're currently looking at.
Okay. So I, I'd like to hold it over to see what those projects are, um, and, and, and see if, you know, there's a, there's a middle ground that can be found to try to mitigate the capacity issue we have within engineering. And as we look at the budget, of course, try to address the capacity, and, are, do we have currently, do we have any openings, job openings that we're trying to hire for in engineering?
We do.
How many, does anybody know?
So, I want to speak, I can't give you the number, but one of the things that we have to do in the engineering department is we talk to personnel board to, and I don't know if it's here, to talk about the exact, but we wanted to hire college students, the way personnel board was set up, it was not allowing us. So we just went and worked with them so that we can be able to hire college students as they're graduating. So there is a challenge, we're hiring within all of our departments with getting people and getting good people, um, so that's a big challenge across the board.
Okay, and then are, have, has it been considered to, to evaluate the workloads of our current engineers on staff and are the duties that are assigned to them the duties that are required of an engineer? So, for example, uh, if, if an engineer is doing, say, contract work or whatever, is there an opportunity to maybe take some of that workload off of them and shift it to maybe the contracts department? Or, you know, there's some questions that came up with the budget, for example, um, the Osprey Initiative contract, I, I see that that comes to, that's falls under the, the engineer's budget. And I don't, I don't understand why the Osprey Initiative would fall beneath the engineer's budget because of the MS four application. And an MS four, four application has like three paragraphs worth of stuff about litter, certainly we can get somebody to do that.
Councilman, I think I can help answer all those questions, so, first, let me go back to the, the contract that's before y'all, the three hundred thousand dollars, it's precisely to do exactly what you're talking about because the staff is, is involved in, um, I'm working on, I've got a contract that'll be coming soon on the Cypress Shores, we got one that's already come on forty-five, we've got resurfacing contracts coming. Jen's group, who does similar type of project, has a lot in the pipeline, so what happens is when there is a grant opportunity that might help either supplement or fully fund some of the design efforts or even in some cases, some new efforts, when we're asked to put together estimates or when GIS is asked to put together design schematics, you know, we get pulled away from something else, so that's the reason for this, for this contract, so to give some extra, give us some extra horsepower within the office. And as far as positions, yes, we are actively pursuing engineer ones, technicians, engineer threes, I can tell you, we just pulled the engineer one list, there was one engineer on it, we hired him, he was Ph. D., um, physician, a student at USA. But we're doing everything we possibly can to, to recruit, but right now the market is just, they, they just, there's just not people on the applicant, on, on the registers for us to hire.
Sure, and I, and I really appreciate that fact, and I'm actually taking it a step further in saying to provide additional relief, because I think when, when that bottleneck happens in, in our engineering department, y'all are overseeing all these projects, it sometimes restricts other departments, maybe, you know, public works, you know, maybe they're hamstrung in, in a way because they can't get anything through there and really take somebody designing, so I would say, take it a step further and if there's an opportunity to maybe evaluate what our engineer's function is and what job they're performing, if there's an ability to say, well, this engineer is not doing engineer work necessarily, they're doing contract work or they're doing something else. Um, if, if there's an opportunity to shift some of that responsibility to some other department, it may provide some additional relief, so that's, that's my point in this.
We'd agree with you, but the three hundred thousand that's there, that is to provide that extra support to go after, pursue extra dollars of grants for either projects that are already in the pipeline or ones that might come up.
It, it's more of a staff augmentation than it is a financial boost to change various projects. But what they're saying is, is that the staff is working on all these projects, but they need additional helping grant running, so this is for future projects. Your line of thinking, however, may be okay and correct, but you're actually fixing apples and oranges here on project details and project performance, they're talking about other projects, you're talking about existing projects. Uh, I say, don't hold this up moving forward at ten thirty, but it up or down, I mean, it should go forward right now if we're gonna do what we're gonna do. Uh, the other thing is, is that, um, I don't see, as sometimes, why our current model has our in-house engineers taking on so much design work. Uh, it may be that we're trying to lessen our costs by not going out to the public, but-
All, all of our design work goes out to private consultants, we don't do any more.
We don't, well, I, I, we don't anymore.
Anymore.
Okay, because I was being told that we're doing some of it in-house, so if we're not doing anymore, then I, I totally agree with, um, three hundred thousand dollars at this point now. Because even with, if we're, are we even performing C. A. contract administration?
We, we are managing those contracts, that we are managing the design contracts and we're managing the C. A. contracts. So, so this is, just to, to give you, for, for, for example, I've been some-
Uh, don't, don't, don't get in the weeds, I was just asking.
I would say it's, it's just to augment the help in primarily with grants, and grants are constantly dropping, we meet on a regular basis, and if there's a grant that fits a project or fits an initiative that is, that makes sense, this lets us get it to the table without taking away from working on-
Well, let me, let me take it even a step forward, if, if you're thinking as a chessboard move, uh, you guys are thinking about potential annexation of additional people and the annexation driving the opportunity for possible additional grants in the city. I mean, if you're gonna, for level of effort for two hundred thousand plus people, I mean, you're gonna expect that the grant opportunities will increase a hundredfold, then how are they gonna do that if they don't have additional? The, the, the cost, the level, the level of effort to get the work done.
And, and this is very minimal, this is, this is the cost of a couple of mid-level engineers and their labor actors, so I mean, this is a very, very minimal cost, I mean, so-
Maybe you don't have to say it.
Yeah, I've gotten said this.
So I, I, I just, I don't even know what these projects are, what grant applications we're going after. It's important to me, so, but we can vote it.
I don't think that there are any grant applications that they're going at, and now that it's incumbent, so I think this is for any future opportunities for grants that they would like to check.
They may not even know of the opportunity just yet, this gives them the bandwidth of people to go after the ones that they are able to research and find out about. I mean, right now, we're just hamstrung because we don't have the people to do this kind of work. If you have to pull off one of Nick's people or one of Jen's people to go after an application, that takes them away from the projects of their own, that they're already on, but this, they don't necessarily know all of the, the grants that are out there. But when the opportunities come up, we need the people to be able to go after these grants.
Mr. President. I, um, that's not true, the, the statement that was just made, they, we don't know what grants we're going after. Colonel Lab, yeah, well, they don't, may not know all of them, I, I don't know any of them. I don't, I don't know any of them at this time, not where one iota of this three hundred thousand dollars is gonna be spent.
Yeah.
I have no idea, so I'm, all I'm asking is, hold it over one week, allow them to provide a list that illustrates that we can include into the, the record of the applications of where we know, and, and I, like I said last week, we know it's not going to fulfill this full three hundred thousand dollars, there'll be some that is left over for those future ones that we are not aware of, I'm just saying, tell us what we know, you know, give us some-
Yeah, a little bit of background, uh, if I could. The, um, the grant department right now is, and, and the grant activity that we have going on right now is significant, i- it's almost approaching two hundred million dollars. If you include A R. P., if you, and, and all the other grant projects that have been taken on over the years that still are in existence today. Back in February, an initiative was taken up to try to pursue additional grant opportunities, we're coming down with the latest governmental fundraising opportunity or, or funding availability. Um, and we started a team, uh, to, to start evaluating those grants back in February. Many of those, one of them just happens to be the Pedway that's gonna be over I sixty-five, and then more of them came about as additional money was made, and this was a, maybe a trillion-dollar type of a, a big program. After we got involved in it, maybe, I don't know, a couple of months, it, we began to see that, okay, we've got a lot of activity going on and maybe we better slow down and take a better look at the amount of grants that we're taking on. In the meantime, while we were looking at these grants and we take a look at new opportunities that come up just about every two weeks, uh, it was deter- that come up just about every two weeks, it was determined that, just as I think Nick had mentioned, that, you know, our engineering support, we need, in an application to a grant, we have to provide an engineer description of what this project is and how we're going to do it. The grant department doesn't have that kind of talent and the engineering department doesn't have that kind of staff to do all that. And that's why this, this three hundred thousand dollar item here was proposed so that we could get some outside support in order to go after the grants. Now, as far as grants go, I think it's pretty much been determined that we have a lot of activity going on right now, so much so that we wanted to scale back. And we have begun to scale back on the amount of grant activity that we have, mainly because it's just, we wanna get these jobs done. And, and so it has been scaled back somewhat. I can, I'm sorry I haven't given you that list, I can give you the list. It more or less changes as we go forward because some of these grants, you know, they pop up and they say, okay, this one will be coming available in October, or this one will be coming available for bid in November. And, and those are the ones that we start looking at when they come up, because we usually have about a month and a half or two months to evaluate them and make a decision on whether or not we're gonna go after them. But that's kind of the story behind all this. You know, I, I don't know if it, it will help you if you saw the list of the grants and the businesses that we, or the business that we have going on right now. I can certainly give you the list of the grants that we've been looking at since October, but as I said, you know, the, the aggressiveness of going after new grants has really slowed down since, since that time.
Thank you, Bob. And I, I hope that I can have an opportunity to look at that list and, and I'll tell you how it could or would be helpful to me. It would, it would show me how we're spending our money towards grants and where we're focusing the efforts of our grants department so I can know, our taxpayer can know, you know, what are our long-term goals, what are we trying to pursue, what projects are most important to us, you know? Are they resiliency, are they stormwater, are they roads? And it's probably all of the above, but it'd be nice to know, you know, what direction we're pointing our ship so that we can, you know, know where we're going. I know you guys deal with it every day, we, we don't get that curtain pulled back quite as often, so, a lot of sight would be helpful to me.
My apologies for not getting you the list yet. There've been a lot of distractions in the last couple of weeks as we get ready for this afternoon. But I can give you a list before even the ten o'clock for you to look at to see what I'm talking about and the scope of the kind of jobs that have been looked at and, and how the, the number, the overall number has somewhat shrunk since we really embarked on this effort back in February.
We don't drive the train bin on what grants come out. For instance, they, they just passed this trillion dollar destruction package. What happens is the federal government will come out and say, you have an opportunity to apply for a grant for bridges and, and accounting or whatever. And, and as that filters down, that'll go on these websites that, that we're looking at. And then we decipher, do we even wanna compete? Do we have the capabilities to compete for that? So, and, and this, these grants populate every couple of weeks. So, you, you really don't know what's out there and how they come down. And our grant team is, is scouring through all of these websites to search for opportunities. And then we have to align what opportunities to the initiatives, that you're pointing, does it align there? The reality is, we don't know and, and it's a guessing game what's going to come out and when it's gonna come out and how it's gonna come out and then do we compete? So, this is, they're trying to set themselves up for success by having the bandwidth and, and the people to put together a complex application. Because if you have to do an engineering design process, that's probably a seven or eight, hundred and fifty-page document that our, our grant application put together. But, you know, to, to try and address your concerns, I, I don't think you're gonna be able to get the answers you're looking for because they don't exist. It, it all depends on what comes down from the federal state government to, to the grants if you drop off it. Does that make sense?
Future, future.
Yeah, it's all future.
Yeah, I think absolutely makes sense, I'm, we're on the same page with that. I'm just saying, I, it would be nice to know how we're gonna allocate three hundred thousand dollars towards what grants, what we're...
It, it, it all depends...
But, but there are some now, I'm just saying, there are some now. There's a list that has been apparently described to us in some way for it to be provided. That's all I'm asking. So, would we be entering into the red...
The, the, the level of expenditure all depends on the level of effort for whatever grant they're going after. I guess the question to ask is, is there one in particular thing that we're working on right now that these funds may be applied to as it comes to grant writing? Or, or several? That's the question.
Yeah, there are several of them and I can give you the list.
That will, that this three hundred thousand dollars will be, some of it will be a portion.
Some of it will be a portion tonight.
Would you please, before ten thirty, would you have that?
Yes, I would.
Right.
Mr. President? Thank you. I believe sometimes it makes something more difficult here. Some of the answers that the co-hosts, one, if we hold it over, would it challenge, would we have any issues with grants? We hold it over, will we? Yes or no?
Probably not.
All right, okay. So, with that being said, I'm gonna vote for it, but my colleague has some concerns. Let's get him the information. We've probably got enough votes already. Next week, we're gonna vote it regardless of if you don't like it or not. With it, live. Have some desire. Hold it over week, everything.
Cory's out of town.
Having disposed efficiently with that issue, I might come back to the ditches. We did have some problems on the council. And I think it's important, one of the, one of the first things I learned when I was on the council, the people who called me about ditch cleaning, is that there are ditches that are city maintained, ditches that aren't. And these neighborhood, a lot of these neighborhood ditches are not maintained by a city. If, if it's a ditch that drains the city street, then it's maintained by a city. But if it's a ditch that all it's doing is draining yards, it's not maintained by a city. When these subdivisions were laid out, since the city mobile sits on a swamp, when these subdivisions were laid out, the, the people who laid out the subdivisions, others, they cut these drainage ditches to drain the yards, but they don't necessarily drain the streets. And so, I've had a number of instances where I've had, where I've had constituents who desperately wanted to get the ditch behind their house drained. And the first, what, the first thing I do is determine whether it is a city maintained ditch or not. And I had G I S make this map, I've got a board back there, it's got every ditch in the city. And the city maintained ditches are one color and the non-city maintained ditches are a different color. And when someone calls me and wants the city to come out there and clean the ditch behind their house, I look at that and if it's not a city maintained ditch, I say, I'm sorry, we can't do that because we can hardly maintain the ditches. We do have a responsibility. So, we can't start maintaining the ditches, you know?
You're, you're spot on, Joel, but I'll tell you, every, every instance that I gave you, I've gone out to the ditch, I've done the due diligence and it's a city...
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want, I don't want criticizing that.
I know, it's a city ditch. The problem is, we're not maintaining the city ditches and it's causing second, third order impacts. And we, we just don't have the bandwidth, obviously, in public services to get out there and do it. And I'm really wondering why we have to see a budget on for three hundred thousand dollars here? And if we've done this, if, if we've let contracts like this with, with subcontractors, how come we're not seeing it on the budget? Are they too low?
It's, uh, the budget's already approved, so it's really a real allocation within the fund of the department. So, it's in public services already, it's just that we moved the money...
Well, what about this? We're moving this money. This, this has already been allocated, it's already been approved. We're, we're moving it, just like we're, we're moving the other, and it's a contract. So, you know, look, the bottom line is this, we aren't doing what we need to in the city to get after some of these basic services and right-wing mowing, tree removal and, and ditch cleaning. And if we're doing it, then I'm not seeing the results of us getting out there and doing it. And maybe, you know, it's, where's the priority? Let's get a priority list or something so we can go back to our constituents and say, hey, here's, here's level of effort, this is where we're focusing our resources. So, we can communicate that back to the constituents. Because everywhere I'm going for the ones that are a city responsibility, it has been years and we're, we're just not getting where we need to be. We've got the money to do it, but we're not getting it, which tells me we don't have the bandwidth to do it or the, our process is, is not correct. And, and I think something like this would be very easy to, so they, they could go and do it while all of our folks are doing other things and that we could clear up this backlog of all these issues that, that we've seen for year after year.
Mr. President? You know, I agree with Joel, I would love to use that map if, if that's possible so I can have it in my office as well. I agree with, um, Councilman Jones as well. I mean, at, at a certain point, you have to ask yourself, we have a surplus of, a lot of money, why aren't we not using it? Like, we gotta get to the place where we're looking at, these things need to get done. So, for me, what I would like to see is, okay, what's the problem? We don't have enough workers. How much would it cost to get it done? So, now you present that to the council and we can look at it and administration look at it and see how it can outline and if we need to move money, then let's move the money so we can get these things done. It's important. I'm getting a lot of phone calls about ditches as well. But again, like, you know, I don't have the map to say if it's a city ditch or is it a ditch that's not maintained by the city. But I believe that if we have the money to get it done, let's look at it. Let's move the city forward. Let's get, give the best to our citizens if we have the capability of doing it. So, I agree with Councilman Jones.
Mr. President? I, I really like what I just heard, comes back to that one statement, when do the people start to feel powerful in the city? When we have excess trouble in the summer and they're willing to pay five million dollars. I think I've made that statement several times now, I agree with that. Everyone, uh, gives the council a specific opportunity here with the statement made and that is, is why don't the council at some point in time have a work session and decide on what are some of the immediate main priorities that are needed that are kind of small tasks and present those to the use of some of those funds as of always accepting what the administration says to us as what they would like to see the use of those funds are, if you'd like to take that statement.
Just one final thing. You know, one of the best things I think the city did was to hire private contractors to do a lot of that right-wing mowing because we just didn't want the employees to do it and it's really helped. So, using that model, this similar point you're doing with this three hundred thousand dollars, I believe, but also could be what, you know, we're talking about here, just broadening the scope of it, to get at some of these smaller things that we hear about every day, which is, you know, the ditch cleaning and the potholes and the tree removal, all these things that get kind of stacked up in public services to get to it when they can, sort of things, we have a long list. So, so, yeah, you know, there is this list of things that we all need, know needs to be done, that we just may not have all the employees to do it, but if we can contract them out, set aside a certain part of money to do it, then maybe that's the direction we need to do. Do we need to do it today or should it be within this budget coming up? You know, how do we handle it and which of the specific things needs to be addressed? But I think certainly we're looking at and we're trying to figure out.
Let me get y'all the status on where we are in the ditches and then also our recommendations going forward if you come up.
Yeah, I mean, we can even go back and look at all the different S R O's to see what's coming in over and over again, not just the ones that we get, but, you know, for three one one. You know, give us, I think, another look at just what the issues are. How far, Rachel?
Twenty one seven one nine, authorized performance contractor, fourth inning, and we've said, four and flying pitch. Twenty five seven twenty, except currently on four and four hundred, so we're commission of the city mobile for the mobile base shore habitat conservation acquisition initiative three mile range. Consent resolutions being introduced, zero three seven two two, one person, Arlidge and Jemaine Conlon as full-time judges of the Mobile District Court. Zero three seven two three, appointing documents to the local tree condition. Thirty seven seven twenty four, the medical field, the C board, issues of the rest of retail, little license for the coffee on South Wall Street. Forty seven twenty five, seventy twenty six are, we're clearly set on plan, churches, uh, probably this is an orange, I've acknowledged on top of security. Fifty eight, seventy twenty eight, Clarice Axius Group, sixteen twenty two. Sixty seven twenty nine, then thirty thirty one, thirty two, your free quarter, five thirty six are internal corporations to Mobile United, John Younge Four High School, African, African Towns, Unity Teach and Outreach, Kingdom Government Connections, A New York, Young Women's Christian Association, A New York Alumni Chapter, Alpha Side, A United Way of Southwest, Alabama, A Positive Mental Impressions, Serve for Public Purpose in the Food Page.
Mr. President, I would just like to make a question that these discretionary distributions, they're selling, they've been out there for some time, and I'd just like to ask, and ask directly or to make every possible effort to get all these discretionary distributions action made before the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
So that we can, so that we can go ahead and get them done, because once they're done, then we, then if we get anything left over, we move it into capital, which won't be in position to know what that number is by the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, in fact, if it's okay, I'd like to make a comment about that.
Sure.
Yeah, there's no question that there have been some that have fallen behind and, and certainly I'll take responsibility for that. But we are now starting to, we're looking at, looking at this process a little more closely than what we had before. You know, we have probably a half a million dollars' worth of money that's going to discretionary spending. We've got, this is, this is just kind of like a, an illustration of the situation. We have a process of approval that probably goes through fourteen different steps and a, a whole slew of different people, from the tenth floor down to the ninth floor, down to the fifth floor, down to the fourth floor. I mean, it, it's, it's really a pretty complicated process and, and, you know, it requires a lot of human intervention in order to get them through the process. So, what we've done right now to get caught up, and I think we made a lot of progress getting caught up, the, the old ones now are being done. But we're gonna start publishing, in fact, we have a, a, a list of all the open discretionary contracts that, that are open and then share them with you all once a month just to give you all an idea of where everything is. And if you see one that's a concern, you can let us know. If you see one that's a concern and you don't know why, we'll explain it to you because, you know, and I won't say this is the majority of the situation, but sometimes, some of these things, the letters go out to the, the individual or the organization that's receiving them, and I won't say this happens a lot, but it happens enough that it caught my attention, we don't always get an answer back. We don't get the contract signed, we don't get the insurance form signed and, and, and just to say, you know, we're a little bit human and maybe we don't get on the phone immediately to the seventh day after this and sometimes it drags. But the point is really, we can do a better job of, of managing these things and, and it, and it does help, I think, if we're all involved in this process because sometimes we have to get in touch with people multiple times and sometimes we have difficulty. But I wanna do a better job for this, for you all, and I'm gonna start, we're gonna start publishing the, the, the whole list once a month for you all to see and where it stands and highlight any particular problems that exist.
That'd be very, very helpful, thank you. Because I know there are instances where, where the organization doing the distribution that we made has not responded to the requests for information or documents that the city made, and that might be an instance where we can help, help move it along. I would urge, I would urge the administration to look at whether fourteen steps are absolutely required and whether that process might be activated somehow.
So am I, Joel. I was just gonna mention that, you know, if, if we... I was just gonna mention that, you know, if we can cut down that process, and, and I know it has been whittled down, um, and maybe identify where the bottleneck resides, if there is one. But a lot of times, once I see that initial request, that's it. I, I have no clue what happens after that, until, if I get a thank you, you know, that's when I know, okay, it's been processed. So to Joe's point and to your point, Bob, if, you know, if y'all are snagged somewhere, you know, they're coming to us for the money, we can definitely reach out and say, hey, you need to get back and do A, B, or C, uh, we'd be more than happy to help you with that.
Good, thanks.
Question two, and this is actually something that Scott, you brought up a while back, when we're talking about neighborhood groups, in particular, the discretionary funds too. One of the requirements is the insurance, and I think it may be liability insurance, correct? For these neighborhood groups that really don't have any money anyway, and basically all they're doing is maybe some landscaping, what's the reasoning for having such a high-dollar liability policy?
So, the, the current count is three hundred thousand is what they're supposed to get. Sometimes it's a million in that standard performance contract, but all they have to give is three hundred, and that's because that caps at the same municipal level as, as the cap that applies to us.
But again, why would they need that kind of liability insurance if all they're doing is just basically landscaping? Because, because our neighborhood groups primarily, that's, that's what they're doing. They're not going out building buildings.
So, so typically it does not happen, but say, for instance, somebody runs into, you know, runs into that, they say, hey, look, I saw this happening here, the work's being done, they blame the contractor, the contractor comes back, points a finger at us. So it's for instances like that, and, and a number of times, we have had additional insurers, not necessarily with neighborhood groups, but we've had, uh, just had one dealing with one of the franchise agreements, and then we have to go back and get our money. That, that way that our city coffers aren't drained.
Why, why would we, if, if all we do is give money to them for a project, and the limit of our involvement is giving them money, why, why, why would, just curious, why, why would we not have any liability?
That's a good question, because we, oftentimes, it's a collaborative effort, right? So, we fund it. Now, when we, if we fund something that's already been done, which we really shouldn't do, but it happens sometimes, then we waive the insurance requirement, all right? We waive, but what we're doing, remember, the performance contract has them performing a service that would normally be performed by the public, or for the benefit of the public. So they're stepping into the shoes of the city. That's a credible argument, it happens a good bit of the time, that's why. Because it's a performance contract, and not just handing them the money, and because you are a public body and it's public funds, you all have to bless it that way.
So, every time we give money to an organization, we're giving it in form of a performance contract?
Yes.
Really?
Pretty much, pretty much every time, not every time, but pretty much every time. All of these discretionary funds are given through performance contracts.
As it always been that way.
Mayor?
Just to make an observation. I don't ever remember.
It, it wasn't, it changed.
What did it change?
So, under one of our former attorneys, she set it up to do it that way, so that it becomes a performance contract, and we vote on that. Whereas when you were on first, it didn't happen that way, it was different.
Is there a way we can revisit this? I mean, because it, it seems almost crazy that, that I can't give the downed bay community two thousand dollars to, you know, to help clean up the situation, neighborhood, knowing that they don't have liability insurance, and it would cost them another twelve thousand dollars in order to purchase liability insurance, if you have to purchase it by year. So now it limits who we can actually help, because they don't have a license, then secondly, they don't have a license, you can't buy liability insurance, and then they don't have the money, because those organizations only don't have anything. So it kind of hampers helping the public with the small thirty-five thousand dollars that we get in discretionary funds, seems a little bit over the top to me.
I didn't put it in place, but I don't disagree with you.
Well, let's, let's see if we can revisit.
While we still have our.
While, while we have Chris. Chris, would you please revisit that? And let's see what we can do.
About the city council, you know, so Wanda.
Yeah, listen.
Wanda, during the last, uh, I forget how long ago, but it was something that she suggested that we needed to do it that, that way, that we started doing performance contracts and voting on the, on the agenda, whereas when William and I first started it, it's not like we didn't do that.
I need to look at that.
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilman Karen, I had a situation that, um, hindered organizational receiving, because they only get insurance during the football season, and so these coaches are coming out their own pocket to help this community, and we see the violence going on, and they are trying to provide a, a way of escape for these young kids, and they couldn't receive it, because they didn't have the insurance between that time, and, and they was coming out their pocket. And so, um, I truly agree with, uh, Councilman Karen.
So there's a, there's a picture of that. We can always look at it case-by-case basis and weigh, we probably waived more than we have, since you all have been on office, than we have in, in two years.
Well, I, I wouldn't say that if the ordinance is structured to where everything is a performance contract, and it's actually resolutional ordinance, then it needs to read where true discretion is there based on some type of legal note, you know, at what monetary value. You know, I could see having liability insurance if a neighborhood or community, if I gave fifty thousand dollars to somebody that's about to fix a wall and then hire a contractor, that's a must, but if I'm gonna give two thousand dollars or seven thousand dollars to somebody that's gonna simply just go to, uh, Fiji Gulf Coast and pass out boxes of food, I got a problem with that.
Well, so do I. It makes a difference.
Why don't we, why don't we look at that, Chris?
Well, Chris, get, we're part of it.
Figure out, figure out maybe.
Let's, let's, let's get it.
I'm surprised I'm the mayor wanting to make the comment.
I just want to make a, um, have an observation. When we started this several years ago, those two hundred thousand dollars a year available in discretionary funds, and if two thousand dollars, you know, pop, we were making about a hundred transactions a year. Now it's six hundred thousand dollars. So if two thousand dollars, you're making, you know, three hundred transactions a year. So you multiply that time, whether it's fourteen steps or, or four steps, that, that is what we're experiencing, every single department and everything that we're doing. We can never disassociate ourselves by thinking that we're going to hire a contractor to go cut a ditch, and then not be a city employee that has to engage and monitor and follow up with that, you know, point. Every contractor that we hire on mowing is the same thing. I've been reluctant to say this, because I want to verify it, but I think the last time we put out a bid for mowing contractors, there was one, you know, that we felt like that might make it. And, uh, Gina, they don't have slopeboards, okay? I mean, what you hope when you show up, uh, is that they, when you go look at their equipment, we, we observe their equipment, and I can look at their equipment, and they can just about predict whether this guy's gonna make it, you know, for the first month. And so there's not only a shortage of, let's say, personnel that we have to do it, but there's a shortage of contractors out there doing, you know, that, that want to do the work. I mean, it's hard, sweaty, you know, difficult work. And I can assure you, every process that we've been dealing with, we try to figure out, how do we reduce the step in this, how do we make it more efficient, how do we hire, uh, hire more people? I mean, so I hear your concerns, we have those every day, you know, down in the weeds. You don't want to get in the weeds, but we're there every day. And I can promise you that the team is trying to figure out, you know, how we can do better. And there are things that, like what you've just said, maybe we can change some of this performance contract, but that is a lot of work just to do those three hundred transactions. So, I just want to make that as an observation, so you don't think that we're sitting here just, you know, waiting for something to happen.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the, and I think this one is very well taken, and we're all interested in figuring out whether we can legally streamline the process, because, you know, some of these, some of these distributions we make are of such a small amount that we're spending more than the distribution, to make the distribution. We certainly don't want to get into that, into that trap. Thank you.
Sixty, sixty seven three seven, full rewards, special loans to administrative services for employees a month, consent resolution, consent, twenty seven thirty eight, authorized contract, seven, first line, for twenty eight, your standing, senior, service, one hundred sixty thousand.
Well, uh, then, I guess, uh, C and, uh, G, it's, it's.
Resolutions being introduced, zero one seven three nine, our doctors, Avenue Insights and Analytics, to the Alphacity Avenue, like sales, food, tax, and related, uh, license requirement there.
Mr. President?
Sir.
Uh, this one, uh, is this something we've used, have we used these books before, or an organization like this?
Definitely. Zero eight seven.
She was gonna give us some information, but, but, I guess my question would be, I, I'm assuming that, that the link with revenue that we receive is offsets and, and provides additional revenue more than the cost, and so.
Yeah, so, um, Avenue Insights, uh, we've, the city's been doing business with them since, um, two thousand and nine. Um, primarily, in the past, it's been for business licenses discovery. Um, uh, this is no cost to the city unless they actually collect the revenue, uh, and which at that time, uh, their commission or whatever is thirty percent of what they collect. Um, primarily, we like to use the service because they have resources that we don't have. They, they service, uh, a lot of different municipalities within the state, uh, and so, um, like I said, that, with having, um, that knowledge that we don't have, they're able to, to help us collect and, and find these businesses that we don't have on our books.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Zero eight seven forty, approved for sort of global industrial group, for cooling fans, and rest, garage, nineteen thousand, twenty forty-eight thousand, four cents. Zero eight seven forty one, approved for sort of varsity, paying brands, holding company for football, golf, host, and soccer goals, for dog, for corporate parks, eighteen thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars, thirty-six cents. Zero eight seven forty two, approved for sort of fuel, for way transit. Zero eight seven forty three, approved for sort of to, Prellian Holdings, for online training services, twenty-nine thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars. Zero nine seven forty four, appropriate, one billion five hundred thousand, in the rebuild Alabama, special revenue fund for the tiger, Dr. M. O. K., Junior Avenue Broad Street project.
Mr. President? I know that we're all on this, uh, what, what is this? Where's it going, and what's it gonna do?
The, uh, rebuild Alabama Act, the rebuild Alabama Act was passed in, uh, two thousand and nineteen. It's a, it's a tax that comes, uh, comes, comes to the state, actually comes across the entire state. I can give you some cut sheets on it, it's got complicated formulas, who gets what, and how much it is. The city's been, well, all municipalities and the city counties have been recipient of the fund for three years. Every year, we have recommended that it go towards, towards this particular project to make up shortfalls on it. Uh, it's dedicated towards, towards roadway, roadway style projects. Uh, the first year was one point four million dollars, it was allocated, the second year was one point three, subsequent year, this year is one point five. It's got, you know, I can give you a picture of copies of it, it goes up, the tax goes up, and so our revenue gets up. At some point, hopefully, you know, it'll, it'll be distributed around other projects in the city, but those were projects that had funding shortfalls, and those are where we were making the recommendations, and they'd be included here.
Thank you.
Twenty one seven forty five, authorized contract, including medical services for deceased by the transport services. Twenty one seven forty six, authorized contract, investment management consultants for emergency medical services, billing and support. Twenty one seven forty seven, authorized contract, project back, for oral board separator replacement organs, for our two hundred five thousand, ninety-four dollars. Early seven seven thirty eight, approved for, to drop off, to operate the shuttle service. Sixty seven forty nine, authorized settlement, and release of planes. We've been asked to have, uh, zero one seven fifty, authorized to the government level agreement, for local county in Alabama for development of station, of little, nine four square.
Question. I've been going, there's been several conversations between the core engineers, myself and each one district on the course building, and the, the, and the citizen of our lot, and the group work to areas in which the course intended or has an intent to build upon. Most people in the district have asked that this project slow down, and that there be a clear master plan of the site facilities in order to move forward. I'm gonna ask that question, or I want to request that that is done. Secondly, uh, in review of the process, and making, or, or getting this to the system, there appears to be though, there may have been some, or we haven't done some steps in the process yet, and digging into this and looking at the necessary need of approval from council, I haven't seen any of those yet. It's been said to me that there was a subdivision, or a, a set aside of land, a set aside for the core, or subdivided it out of this process, and it's my understanding, or it has always been my understanding, that the council is the only entity that can grant that authority after it goes to the planning commission. I have not seen that yet. Looking at the records, looking at the records, and trying to find all the details, I haven't seen any signature of a, of, of clerk, or administrative official, in, in, or any, the only signature I've seen is that of a certain air, which, uh, that, that hold me away. Also, going forward, there should be, if there was something done, and the core has an agreement, I haven't seen or heard any ground lease or anything like that, and, and again, that is council authority, which means that the process is, is out of whack, in that we need to slow this down and get everything correct, and that needs to be a master plan for that side. So I'm gonna request that we do that, as opposed to something coming up here, and inadvertently getting totally stopped, and preventing the agencies that we're trying to help to get to the end of the road, and a viable project for our district, where they may run into a situation where they have to start all over again, therefore killing themselves in the funding cycle, if you understand what I'm saying? So I hate to see that happen, but we need to slow this down again, Brian.
Okay.
Whenever we do an infrastructure project, I think, whenever we do an infrastructure project, that's development, it's those road projects, even if it's sidewalks, we have some people that don't like that project. I'm not, I'm not arguing against you, I'm, I'm not, I'm just making a general statement about the city's infrastructure. Been sitting over there in full repair for twenty or thirty years. The city, i- if we wait for the day when everyone in the city and all the stakeholders drawing hands around that building and saying, who buy ya, it's gonna be looking like that for the next hundred years. No matter what we do over there, there are gonna be people that don't like what we do. And at some point, we've got to either decide that we're gonna do it, even though some people don't like it, or we can just let it sit there for another twenty or thirty years and get worse.
Listen to Manny here.
Yeah.
Or just a million dollars a year.
Yeah. Mr. President?
I want to argue against you.
I, I, I understand that, and I also understand the process of master plan. I mean, it's hard to make a decision on anything when there is no master plan that all agencies of the city can work to, including the ARB, and including the planning commission, including the DCA, including the downtown lines and everything else that has an equitable portion shared and responsibility of the site and the development. We all know that not everybody's gonna ever agree on everything on the site, but again, you can't agree on anything when there's no master plan, and you also can't agree on anything when the process is out of whack.
And, and, it, it, I understand that also, but it makes no sense to come up with a master plan that's not achievable, a, a master plan that dictates certain uses that no, that no outside party wants to invest in, or, or, uh, a financial commitment from the city that the city can't do. the city that the city can't, that, that, there's got to be, the, 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 the plan has got to be something that's practical and achievable.
And, and I think that, and I, and I think that everybody's willing to work with something that's practical and achievable. It, it's not the fact that people are looking to stop the development, it's the fact that they're wanting something that mixes with the surrounding community, but also the business community, and provides the same level of quality of life from the civic center that they've, or we've always seen. One of the biggest concerns is, is when you say the plan's not needed, but what do you do with the two hundred and fifty spaces and cars that used to park there in the event that are not going to be parking on top of my neighbors? You know, who want to replace them with a thousand parking spaces? Less the Corps of Engineers needed spaces, that their fleet will always be there, less a possible hotel that'll be using that parking lot when it comes along, less anybody else. So you have to have a plan to plan for these things, and if you don't, then all you're doing is creating a, a bigger problem than what we already have. So moving forward, I'm glad to hear that you're agreed that we should slow this down and get it right, but, and knowing what has to happen, change where at one with the Corps, let's all work together to see if we can get something in place within a reasonable, reasonable amount of time.
Anything else from the council?
We do have a city council man's committee meeting, today, one o'clock, in order to provide an opportunity for the council members to ask questions about the budget, propose the, the 2023 budget, this is a work session, there will be a [inaudible].
Will I be able to ask for line item expansions at this meeting, or is that going to have to be a request done in future details of an individual line item given? So, the reason why it's going through the budget is so condensed, and when I look at certain lines and try to go back and compare, seems like there are numbers within numbers that I'd like to see, and I, and I cannot see those numbers that you're giving me, which is not fair to me, because I, I can't, I can't determine what's in those lines.
I, I don't see really a problem with sharing information with you.
Well, if you, if you've got a budget that's four hundred pages thick, why, why don't you give it to me? I'm pretty good at that kind of stuff. I like to have it. If you can give it to me digitally, I would appreciate it.
And lastly, football's back, and [inaudible] Saturday, Jags are playing, let's get that squared.
Nice summer suit. I got five days to wear them all, so it's, the whole.